And next up, we'll have the presentation of the colors from the West Brunswick High School J R O T C. And then after that, First Sergeant Ward will lead us in the pledge.
Color guard, attention. Check, read, colored. Forward, march. Color guard, oh, coast, colored. Ready, front, center, face, reset, march.
Pleasure agents to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and the vision of liberty and justice for all.
Order, arms. Center, face. Forward, march.
Thank you. You can be seated. And next up, we'll have approval of the regular meeting agenda. If I have a motion to approve the agenda as written.
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Moffett. On purpose, say aye.
Aye.
And next up, we'll have public address, and Sharon Duncan will be our first speaker. And Mr. Cronk, if you could please read the policy.
Yes, sir. Discussions regarding particular individual employees, litigation, student records, or other matters which may be required to keep be kept confidential may not be discussed in the open forum setting. The chairman will have the responsibility to determine matters of discussion that may be inappropriate and rule the speaker out of order if necessary. And presentations will be limited to three minutes per person.
Is this Duncan here? I want to see Sharon Duncan. And next up, we'll have Dale Todd. Welcome, Mr. Todd.
Good evening. My name is Dale Todd. I live in Leland, North Carolina. Here to talk about something that kind of touched me in a way when I saw an article earlier this week that the recent state test results listed five, quote, "low performing" schools in Brunswick County. Actually, there were quite a few more in other counties, but just that whole reading about that testing and the whole process just rang a bell with me. As many of you know, I spent many years in the military. I spent even more years in management in the private world. And I can't tell you how many times I was in organizations or running organizations where some goal came up. It could have been sales. It could have been retention, whatever the heck it was. And it had to be met. And somebody wasn't meeting it. And they'd go off and they'd work and work and come up with a plan and work their butts off and most of the time, meet the goal for the next iteration. Everybody'd go, "Boy." And the next thing you know, the next cycle would come around and they'd miss the goal again, primarily because they were so busy focused on the items of the goal that they lose track of the fact of what needed to be gone involved to succeed in after the goal. So the groups that were successful, and mine spent spent the time getting the plan for the goal, but they spent a little time looking for additional items that would help sustain the goal after you've met it. Now, you may be doing that with your staff, and you've got a sharp staff. They've got strategic plans. They've got all sorts of other stuff. I would just urge that for these schools that are low performers, in order to become regular performers, don't let them lose sight of the fact there are other things they should be looking at, like nonprofit organizations, like even corporate have grants, have money, they have materials that will be happy to provide to schools and to students if they're approached. So don't lose sight of that, that there's a community out there willing to help as much as the schools help the community. I think you guys, I hate to say this in public, are doing a great job. But I think obviously, there's more work to be done. And the more the community involvement, the better the chances of getting us where we really want to be with a fully successful education system. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. There's no board salutes tonight. And our first and only presentation, Mr. Evans.
Thank you. Sonny Hendricks and myself were here in July, presented to the board and on behalf of the Giddians. And Sonny's going to talk with you for a moment about that distribution. Thank you.
No, I'm not Don Evans, but we've been riding and had enough windshield time. He calls me brother. So we'll go for that. As this was a July meeting, I think the board had approved a presentation that we had as Giddians, the Brunswick County chapter, to get into at least middle schools. And we looked at it as a challenge. We looked at it as an opportunity. And and we were just thrilled to jump on it. So I want to come back to you, and I felt like we should, give you some feedback. I mean, if you're going to if you're going to allow us to place the bibles in the schools, at least, let's give you some feedback on what we saw. And also, feedback from you guys, if you've heard anything negative or positive from any of the six schools, let us know. It would help us, you know, in the future. Let me tell you what we saw when we got there. We're talking six middle schools. Immaculate. I mean, the grounds were just beautiful. Reception was good. I mean, you could go in and speak to the receptionist or anyone else in the office, and they would greet you with smiles. So it made us feel comfortable. And hopefully, we gave comfort to them with and they were prepared for us coming. We had given the letter to all the principals in the six schools. And the six principals allowed us to go into the schools. So based on that, the secretaries and all the ones in the school knew what to expect whenever we showed up with gifts. If you remember, we said we would like to have two days placed in the school for two days. And that's what we did. We called ahead of time to find out how many pupils were in. Am I with that time? Okay, thank you. I didn't think so. Not that I'm going to spill a bunch of beans, but we found out how many were in each school. And from that, we were able to take that number of bibles there. In every case, we set up, and you guys are fully aware of the cafeteria's in the little stage. So we were able to set up on the stage. And let me just get to the bottom of it. Thirty-one hundred bibles were given out. We didn't give them out. We gave them the opportunity to take them. We set the display up and said, "Free, take one." And I mean, it's just ridiculous. You know how many students you got. And I don't think we may have had, Don, two hundred, maybe altogether, picked up. But that is superb. Thirty-one hundred. So these were the bibles we presented, the red student bibles, the fine and the solid red ones. Been here a long time. This is about to and really, it's got to be for the students because the font in it is so small, I would have a hard time reading. So but anyway, I just wanted to let you know how much we appreciate you guys allowing us to do. And also ask, what have you had any feedback, positive or negative, or anything that we may, Adele, anything that we may be able to do differently, you know, as we present these again? That's what we'd like to hear. Have you heard anything at all? I mean, no news sometimes is good news.
I would say, yeah, no news in general. And so I haven't heard a bunch of complaints.
Right.
Questions, but not complaints.
We've had some feedback that would come to us. Some of these kids have never had a Bible in their hands. So to put the word in their hand is what the Gideon Internationals all about. So we thank you guys for the opportunity. I think we're going to try to do it again. And the spring is kind of what we and we totally depended on the principals, what they allowed us to do.
I'd just share a minute. When we had our first Brunswick County Agricultural Fair this year, and the Giddians had a booth, you were not there, but I spoke with Mr. Shaw was there.
Right.
His mother. And they were just sharing about the successes that they have had across the state.
Oh, yeah.
And it was just phenomenal, the number of bibles that had gone out.
That's right, Catherine. We put out.
They've been doing it a long time. You probably, you may have been in the booth at another time, but when I was out there, it was.
We put out twenty-seven hundred bibles just at that fair. And it was miserable time. My wife was in the hospital, but I wasn't there. But it is my responsibility to make certain that we've got bibles in the county. So that was that was super turnout.
Yeah, one of the counties said they've given over. Yeah, one of the men said they've given over sixty thousand bibles in one of the counties he's worked with over the years.
It's good.
And I mean, it's amazing.
Well, the word's getting in people's hands. And we just thank you guys for the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we'll have the approval of the minutes from the October seventh regular board meeting and the October twenty-first curriculum policy committee meeting.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Cook.
I second that.
Second by Ms. Smith. On purpose, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, we'll have board committee reports. And Ms. Smith?
Yeah. Well, it was an exciting day at our curriculum committee. And we listened to principals from all over the county because they all came and presented progress from their school improvement plans from last year, and then presented their plans that they and their school improvement team had completed for this year. And so it was interesting. They shared a lot of data and a lot of the reasons behind why they would have a certain goal. And so we were real impressed. They did a great job. I know that was a lot to come to the board and to present, you know, to take responsibility and accountability and to present all of your schools' data and then tell us how we're going to improve. Because you are exactly right, Mr. Todd. We have a lot of improving to do. And that's what we that's what we tend to do. That's what we're going to do. So we appreciated that. I wanted to give a shout out to Ms. Hewitt's leadership class at North Brunswick High School. I had the opportunity to go and to speak to their leadership class a couple of weeks ago and at North Brunswick High School. And I want you to know that I'm an elementary, former elementary principal. So I didn't spend a whole lot of time in high schools, except when I was in high school. But the students that I encountered were so polite. They just really impressed me. Handshakes, you know, eye contact. They just really impressed me. So I was really proud of them and and everybody at North High. So that was all I had to share.
I'm going Friday, so I hope you didn't do too good and the bar's not too hot.
Well, Mr. Barger, I will tell you, I taught them the first rule of leadership. A meeting without food is an email. You better take some treats with you when you go.
I'll give you some sour paste.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Go take some candy or something.
All right. And there's nothing on the consent agenda for tonight. And to the action agenda and the first item, number one, Building K infrastructure contract, Ms. Bear. Nope, not Ms. Bear.
Sorry to disappoint you.
Ms. Bear via Mr. Smith.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay. So representing Ms. Bear, she has asked for approval for data wiring in the Building K, which is the central office building, to a new data closet from so the original data center room can be utilized for other purposes that we'll have plans for. The existing drops, the cabling, the wiring is very old, and it is not long enough to reach a new location. There's some design issues. It's very problematic for the design to be able to set up to reach the new area. And in short, we just need new wiring, new cabling. And so she had it bid out. Three proposals were received, and the selection committee recommended N C Sound of Wilmington at a hundred twenty thousand seven hundred forty-four dollars. So technology is requesting that the board place a contract with N C Sound for that amount for action item to be approved.
All right. A motion or discussion? Motion by Mr. Genie.
Second.
Second by Ms. Moffett. On purpose, aye.
Aye.
All right. Next up, Mr. Smith, schematic design request.
Yes, sir. Sawyer Sherwood was selected, of course, as our architect for a new elementary school. Mr. Cohen and I recently got to sit down with them and actually review part of the master plan, which shows the location of the school on the property that we're looking to close on hopefully very soon, and where some of the parking may go, just just some basic design work that they've done for us. And so tonight, we want to ask for approval for schematics. And so before I get to that part, I'd like for Mr. Sherwood, Doug Sherwood's here with Sherwood and Associates, he has a short presentation just to come up and give you a little more information on where they're at in in our project.
Thank you, Larry. Well, as Larry mentioned, I am Doug Sherwood, Vice President of Sawyer Sherwood and Associate Architecture. And while I'm presenting this project update tonight solely, I just want to let you know I'm representing a team of architects and engineers that are working on your project. Now, I've had the opportunity to present to your operations committee a few times, and I really appreciate you having me here tonight in front of your full board to provide this update. Wanted to go over a couple of things, just to show where we are and what we what we have done to date. We have completed the design guidelines for your future elementary schools. I think everyone has a copy of this. That's the book that we're using as our foundation. As Larry had mentioned, the school system is very close to the site or to purchasing the site for your new elementary school, and that's the site we're working on. The school system has also gone through the process of selecting a CM at-risk contractor for the construction portion. And over the past three months, we have been working on site plan concepts with CLH, our landscape architects and civil engineers. And we've had multiple meetings with Brunswick County Schools Operations Department to get buy-in on the concept we're going to present tonight. So that's where we that's where we've been. And the next steps are where we're going. So tonight, we are looking for a notice to proceed with schematic design through hopefully completion of construction documents. If you can do that, that will allow the design team to work continuously through every aspect of the design rather than periodically starting and stopping. This is a typical progression for a project such as this, and it's the most efficient way for the project to reach the next step, which would be bidding or and construction contracting, and then moving on to construction. And finally, the real goal that we're all after is kids in school. I did want to touch on a schedule update as well. Too fast. And I apologize. There's a lot of information in this schedule, so I don't expect you to be able to read every line. But I did want to put that before you again, just so you can see all of the all of the critical areas we've identified in the schedule. So as we move forward, we don't miss anything, and we account for all of the different review agencies along the way. And we understand the goal is to have the new school completed prior to August 2028 school year. And we are still working towards that goal. However, I did want to bring to your attention that discussions with the CM at risk is suggesting it may be closer to January of 2029. We're going to continue working efficiently through the design phase and explore alternatives with the CM at risk to find ways to expedite construction activities wherever possible. Per our current schedule, we are completing, we are to be complete with our master planning phase by the end of this week, and we are on track to do so. The final documents will be submitted to Brunswick County Schools by the end of the week. And since the schedule is so small, I thought I would just bring or mention a few completion dates or milestone dates. And again, these these milestone dates are dependent on beginning schematic design as early as next week. So if we can do that, we could complete schematic design by the end of March of 2026, complete design development by the end of August of 2026, complete construction documents by the end of December in 2026. And then our goal is to have all and then our goal is to have all permitting approvals, uh, in hand by the middle of March twenty-twenty-seven. Uh, the CM at risk would then complete bidding by the end of May in twenty-twenty-seven, um, with construction currently projected to be complete by October of twenty-twenty-eight. This would allow a few months for Brunswick County Schools to move in and, uh, have school ready for students January of twenty-twenty-nine. And again, we are gonna work to find ways to try and expedite that anywhere we can. Um, again, to meet these milestones, we must work together. Uh, so to meet the end date for each phase, it's critical that we're given notice to proceed on the, the front end as well so that we can begin and, and stay on track. Um, it's also gonna be necessary that as we start moving into schematics, we, uh, get site surveys, um, and additional geotechnical exploration done in a timely manner, and we'll be able to use that and do that now that we have our master plan laid out for the site. So, that's the not-so-fun stuff. This is the more fun stuff, so. Looking at where your site is, um, I think most of you are familiar with it, but it's the Jackeys Creek property, and it is just south or below on this image of US seventeen and to the east or right of Brunswick Forest. This is the, uh, master plan or site plan that we have been working on over the past three months. This is a little bit, not quite a bird's eye view, but it is, it is encompassing the entire parcel, uh, that is being looked at. And so a few things to note here, the red line shows the entire parcel, um, that is, that is currently looking, looking at to be purchased. The bluish, greenish areas, uh, identified as wetlands are indeed wetlands. There's a little bit to the upper right-hand side of the site, uh, and then a rather large one in the center of the site or just, just north of the center of the site. And then some of our exploration during this process, uh, we have looked at reports of flooding from Hurricane Florence, and that is what is showing up in that, that kind of blue shade, almost a purple shade that runs through the site. Uh, we wanna make sure that, that was a pretty historic event. We wanna make sure that we're definitely outside of those boundaries. And, and you can see, actually, when we overlaid that, um, the Florence flooding is actually in excess of even what FEMA flood maps show. So, we're just trying to make sure we look at everything on this site. Uh, there's a hatched area that kind of runs diagonally up and down on the page. Uh, that is a zone that we are, are, that North Carolina Department of Public Instruction is recommending we, we stay away from the edge of the, uh, high voltage power line easement. So, we've got two numbers there, we've got two shadings, one is a hundred and fifty feet, one is two hundred and fifty feet. Um, we are able to stay out of that and still get the actual school campus, uh, to fit in that lower portion. Based on the size of the school and all the constraints we just mentioned, it has pushed the, uh, or, or made the selection of the location on the parcel the southern portion of the site. Um, we have looked at trying to get that in at the northern corner, and it's just simply too big. Um, so we are locating the school campus for the elementary school to the southern part of the site. And then we will take a little bit closer look here. Um, a few more site-related items. Um, as you, the, the upper left-hand corner of the page would be the first entrance you would come to on this property, and that is ingress and egress for the carpool line. So, you can see how that enters in, and it kind of snakes through the front of the school, and then it exits out the same, the same location. If you were to pass that, continue south or downward on the page, you would come to the, uh, bus loop, and that would enter in and circle around for all of the buses as well as any sort of, um, uh, delivery vehicles or heavy vehicles that might be, uh, coming into the site for the cafeteria or, uh, custodial area. And you can see that service entrance located just above that parking lot. We are looking at canopies both for the carpool and the bus loop so that students can, uh, stay dry, uh, during those, those bad weather days. We're also looking at staff parking lots. Uh, this, this was one of the things that we actually discussed probably the most, uh, when meeting with the operations department. And so what we've done now is we've taken an approach that we have two, almost three parking areas for staff. So, there is some parking in the center, which would be through the, the carpool lane. So, if anyone gets to school early and they're not concerned with the carpool lane, that would be a great place to park and convenient for the admin. We also have a parking lot that is at the very bottom of the page near, uh, below the bus loop, uh, and that allows stu-, uh, staff to come and go, uh, without getting tangled up in the carpool lane, as, uh, we, we have all been there and, and done that. Um, there's a series of gates to make sure that that is an area dedicated for staff only and not, not allowing, um, other, other members or other, other, uh, parents to, uh, to find those areas. Uh, there's also a, a staff parking area to the very top of the page, so it gives another option for students, or, sorry, for, uh, staff that may be, um, closer to the classrooms at the top of the building. You'll see a fire apparatus road as well. If you go through the bus loop, there's a darker shaded, uh, lane that goes around the backside or the right of the building and circles almost inside that, that courtyard space. That is an apparatus lane that's gonna be required by, by building code, and so we're trying to find a way to get some dual use out of that. So, we've located in a place where we can do some gates and, and have that do double duty as paid play for the students. Off of that, you'll see several play areas. Uh, the one most, uh, I guess, page left or in the courtyard space is something we're anticipating maybe for EC and, and kindergarten. Um, we could see a way of setting that up, so maybe we have a, a series of layers, uh, with fences and gates so that, uh, we understand eloping is, is an issue, so we're trying to find a way to put in some real soft boundaries that, that would help, um, keep students where they need to be. And the last thing on the, the site items is just the fencing. The entire, uh, campus is fenced, and you'll see that all of the stormwater ponds are also fenced, so that is definitely a requirement. Moving into the building itself, which was a, a driving factor of the site design, uh, that, that came again from the design guidelines. So, all of the work that we did with teachers and staff at the first of the year to create this document, that's been our driving force. And three of the main things that I wanted to mention is just, it helped us with organizing space based on activity. A real key thing was reducing walk times, so trying to get the distance from classrooms to your, uh, your specials or any of your student services to a minimum, um, that was a key factor. And then the other thing is providing natural light throughout. So, starting with the natural light, the one thing this site allowed us to do is you'll see kind of two bars. At the top of the page, there's a bar that, that runs left and right, and that's east and west. And then you see the bottom portion with, with physical ed and cafeteria and EC and kindergarten also running, uh, page left and right. So, that, that's east and west, and what that does is it allows a large exposure, uh, or facade to the north and to the south. So, we are much, it, it's a, it's a better way to handle and control the sun that comes in and control glare. So, that was a, that was a key factor in, in just the overall sighting of the building. Uh, getting into some more specifics, the admin is in the green, and it's located more in the center. Uh, that becomes the gateway to the school, and it also allows admin to have full vision of the front of the school and entrances, uh, for the vehicles. Um, so that's adding to the safety of the school. Physical education, uh, is located in the bottom left, it's the yellow box, and it is located there because it allows two things. It allows easy access to parking areas, and it also allows us to separate that from the remainder of the school, so it would be easily be used, uh, during after hours. As we kind of move, uh, we talked a little bit about the cafeteria, but the cafeteria is able to, um, utilize that bus loop for all of its, uh, food service deliveries and keeps that activity, uh, with, with physical education in that same area. Um, moving to the right, we, or across the hall is EC and, and down to the, to the right would be kindergarten. So, um, those are a little bit noisier, uh, program elements, and it also allows for shorter distances for our smaller children, so our kindergartners don't have to walk as far to get to the cafeteria or, or PE. As you go down and to the right or page up, you would have art and music, and then on the opposite side of that purple bar is the student services. And so all of that, again, is, uh, is located where it is for easy access for everyone in the wing below. As we cross in to the, uh, the bar at the top of the page, you can see first grade, second grade, and media center. Um, that is actually a two-story bar, so third, fourth, and fifth is on the second floor. And we'll, again, keeping the, the travel distance in mind, uh, we have taken those, that hallway and kind of opened it up and put all of our, uh, services in the center. So, you see the gray areas, there's a lot of mechanical and electrical, we've got student support spaces, we have all of our restrooms, they're in the center, so it keeps from, it keeps that building from elongating and having an extremely long walk. Um, that was kind of a key, key thing in this. Uh, this top wing is also our quieter wing of the building. Uh, I believe someone touched earlier tonight on testing and grades, and we understand third through fifth, uh, they do a lot of testing and they need quiet, so they are in that quieter wing, and they're also on the second floor. So, as we move to the second floor, um, that's the third through the, through the fifth. It has the same hallway design, so we're, we're keeping those shorter distances. And you'll see that there's a portion of the media center that's actually a two-story volume, so that not only allows third through fifth to have some views into the media center, but the media center's on the northern part of the building, so it allows us to bring that northern light, that daylight into the center core of that second floor as well. Finally, on the site, we have looked at future expansion. We know this school will never go beyond what it's designed for on day one, but just in case it does, uh, we've looked at, you know, earmarking, uh, ground space for basically every classroom wing to expand. So, that, that is, it's critical at this stage because it allows us to set up the site amenities in a way that they don't have to be relocated at a later date. And that is pretty much the end of what I have for you, uh, as far as the presentation goes, and we're just hoping that we can turn that center box of design documents into a colored image and start moving forward or continue moving forward on this project.
Can I ask one question real quick?
Yes, ma'am.
Is the, um, I've been out of town, so I haven't had time to look at all the specifics, but is the cafeteria gonna have a stage like the other cafeterias? Is there any kind of stage setup, or is that part of the plan anywhere?
Actually, during all of our, our research, we found that it really was a little bit better hand-in-hand if we did that in the physical education area.
In the gym, okay.
Yes, ma'am, so we, we've got a smaller stage, and then we also have, we're, we're anticipating a tiered platform, so it allows for smaller performances, or if you have a larger performance, rather than designing a full stage, we have the tiered area.
I saw the gym and the, and the cafeteria next to each other, so I didn't know how. Some of them have the, you know, the stages inside of the cafeteria, so I just wasn't sure how.
Yeah, I would have, Ms. Cook, you're exactly right. I, I've, I've worked in schools that have done it both ways, um, and I, I agree with Doug that I, I believe it works better in the gym than it does in the cafeteria. Uh, one thing I will say is, um, I, I don't know if Doug, I didn't hear Doug mention this, but, you know, most of our elementary schools, you're gonna be staging kids at the end of the day to go out to the buses or to go out to the car ride or line to sort of keep them corralled. And so by having the, the, um, the physical education space and the cafeteria right there at the front, one with the bus entrance and one with the front door, it makes it really easy to stage the kids in those two locations because you've got plenty of space.
Right, yeah.
Um, and they're in the, they're in a good location, so we don't have to stage them in a hallway, which is problematic.
Yeah, that's good.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time.
Do we have a motion to approve the, uh, recommendation from Mr. Smith?
I move.
Motion by Ms. Cook?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moffett, on purpose, aye?
Aye.
All right, next up, the purchase of four, um, classroom modulators, Mr. Smith?
Yes, uh, so due to, uh, overgrowth at Belleville and Lincoln, uh, they are currently in a good situation to get through this year with, uh, the existing classroom space that they have, but we do project a growth, uh, in the next two years that may require two modulators per year that be added there. We, we've got a good location picked out for, uh, these sites. Uh, we put out a bid for four classroom modulators, uh, two for Lincoln, two for Belleville, and we had to rebid it because we got two bids. Uh, the lowest bid wound up coming in from Modular Technologies in the amount of five eighty-four, nine forty-nine. So, that's about a hundred and forty-six K plus, uh, for each modular. Uh, that is just for the modular, that'll be, uh, delivered to the school and anchored, and then the, uh, at that time, of course, there'll be additional costs for, uh, decking, a fire road, canopies, electrical, sewer plumbing, uh, whatever else we need to get everything ready for the schools. But it is critical that we, uh, go ahead and get that started, and we've seen at, uh, Lincoln and Union this year how long it can take to get permits and power companies out to get started. So, it is critical, uh, we're gonna be ready for next August, that we get these, uh, started as soon as possible. So, we're asking, uh, for an action item for that to be approved tonight.
I know we discussed this in committee before as well, so, uh, any discussion or questions from the board?
I, I would just share that, um, based on recent experience, uh, we estimate that, you know, per modular classroom, it ends up being about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Am I correct in that?
Yes, sir. That's what we've allotted for total cost.
By the time you're done with all the work that has to be done to get the modular classroom set up, so we're talking about, uh, a million dollars for these four classrooms, um, and.
Fire suppression, technology, furniture, all, that's turnkey.
I just say that because this isn't gonna stop, so. We're trying to stay ahead of it until we can get a school built.
All right, do we have a motion to approve?
I make a motion.
Motion by Ms. Smith?
Second.
Second by Ms. Moffett, on purpose, aye?
Aye.
All right, next up, operations office renovations, Mr. Smith?
Okay, we, we looking at some, uh, operations office renovations, uh, as everyone's probably aware by now, we moved the print shop from, uh, our operations here down to our new Shalote warehouse. That's worked out really well, uh, so now we want to make some changes in our current office area. We want, um, to move our offices that we're currently in, in operations over to where the print shop was, and that's where the majority of this, uh, project would, this work will be done. Um, then we would move child nutrition from the current modular that they're in, which is an outside area of the main building. They would come into our offices, which is right next to their child nutrition warehouse, where, of course, all the food comes in and gets shipped out, and they are constantly in and out that area in all kinds of different weather conditions, and it'd be really helpful to have them right beside, uh, their warehouse, uh, also. So, we would move in the back, they would move there, and then Mr. Pascal's made us aware that they've got two vocational, uh, vocational rehab specialists that, uh, in high schools that need to be in a central location, and they're taking, uh, office space in the schools. So, they would come and, and go to the modulators in the child nutrition area. And then we would build, uh, the, the old print shop, we would have to put in office HVAC, uh, and some power, some electrical changes, uh, run some technology lines, but basically build walls, floors, and a couple of doors in those areas. Uh, we bid that out at a cost, uh, had ten bids, actually. There were three that were under two hundred thousand dollars, the lowest being a hundred and fifty-three thousand one hundred dollars. So, we're asking for approval tonight to fund that and get that project started.
Any questions for Mr. Smith?
How many offices will that give you, or does?
We, we will put, um.
By the time you.
Five offices in the print shop area. There's currently three of us, uh, back there, this figliola, myself, and Ms. Grissi, that would move into that area, and it gives us two additional offices. But we're growing as the system grows, and our building's pretty full, too, and we feel like that'll be valuable office space down the road. Uh, next year, we're looking at bringing back an energy manager just to specialize in HVAC, for instance, and it would give us some additional office space in the future.
All right, motion to approve?
Motioned.
Motion by Ms. Moffett?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook, on purpose, aye?
Aye.
Last one, Mr. Smith.
Okay. Also, also the operation.
Metal roof.
We, we took care of the schools first, so now we're getting to operations. We, we've done a lot of new roofing, of course, at all the schools. Uh, operations roof, uh, I can testify, uh, during Florence, we, we, uh, when we stayed there eight nights, uh, we had trash cans out in the. we had trash cans out in a lot of places because there's a lot of leaks in that original metal roof that's in that building. And actually, transportation is, is in worse shape than we are. So we really need to replace those metal roofs. We put some bids out. We had the low bid of $635,851, and we're asking, like I said, this area is used as headquarters during shelter times, and we, we feel like we need a roof that we can count on during those, those type periods. So we're asking for approval for that roofing project.
How soon are you, are you able to do it?
It would be in place before next summer.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Moffett?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and next up, budget amendments. Hello, Sherri.
So now that Mr. Smith has been up here and told you all the fun things he wants to do, let me tell you about where we're gonna get the money.
How we're gonna pay for it.
So capital budget amendment number seven is actually requesting that the county allot us our funding from our contingency funds over there to pay for those buildings for the tuna, to the tuna $1.77,324. So we're asking for that to go for approval tonight so we can get it sent over to the county. And then capital budget amendment number eight, as we spoke about earlier, the schematic design work that needs to be done, the funding for that is there, as well as the request to go ahead and ask for the pre-construction funding that we'll need as, as we step further into this process. Rather than taking another amendment to the county to ask them to forward fund these projects, we thought we'd put those both on one and ask them to send the funding over, and then, of course, it will go into our account until you folks sign the contracts for these projects, and then it'll be ready on the spot when you sign them. So we're asking for approval for that tonight as well, and that's all I have.
Motion to approve the budget amendments? Mr. Ganey, followed by Ms. Smith with the second. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, and Ms. White with the interagency agreement?
Good evening, board members. I am thrilled to bring to you tonight the interagency agreement for handling school offenses that we have been working on for the past couple of years. Within this document, it was collaboratively, collaboratively done between the sheriff's department, the DA's office, the juvenile court, our students services team, Mr. Pascal, and First Sergeant Ward, we're all part of this team that finalized this plan. It started for us originally in 2017, and I participated in the original development as a, as a principal member. So we're thrilled to bring the next three-year agreement to you tonight. In the agreement, you probably saw that our goal is always to resolve all issues in this, at the school with our families first, but occasionally we do have to convene as a team with law enforcement, and this identifies the areas in which we would do that. The relationship between our administrators and our SROs is unbelievable, and we can work through these issues together as a team, and we're thrilled to have their partnership. Hopefully, you also noticed there's a focus on diversion with things like teen court and the restore program. So we are always looking to give kids the opportunity to improve from mistakes that they make, but we do need to have agreements in place so that we can do training between our SRO teams and our school administrators. So asking for signature tonight for this approval by the board chair and the superintendent.
Any questions? If not, if we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Moffett?
Second.
Second by Ms. Cook. All in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
And discussion and announcements. Mr. Cole?
Yes, just to share a few things. First of all, on October 14th, Ms. Tiffany George led the first session of our brand-new aspiring principal program. This is a program that we created with the express goal of providing more targeted support for assistant principals who aspire to be principals. Not all of them do, but some of them really have the ambition to be principals, and we wanted to provide an application-based opportunity for them to get specialized instruction to help prepare them for future jobs, because we wanna be Brunswick-built as much as possible, and we want to do everything we can to train our own people so that they have the opportunity to progress within our school district. On October 28th, on that same note, we had our very first Teachers Exploring Administration Program, which is a program designed for teachers who, before they jump in and commit their time and money for a master's in school administration program, wanna learn more about what school administration actually looks like. And these are, it's an application-based process, they have to be selected from their application, and we're looking for teachers who are already involved as leaders, as teacher leaders in their school, because that's really where it starts. We're not as much interested in folks who are just kind of on a lark. We want people who are currently on their school improvement teams at their schools, or they're a grade-level chair, or they're a subject area chair, they're already showing a capacity for leadership. Both of those align with goal 4.1 of our strategic plan, which is talent development. On October 29th, I was fortunate to be able to spend almost the entire day doing an Arts and Letters guided observation for leaders at Shalote Middle School. Arts and Letters is our brand-new six-through-eight English language arts curriculum, and obviously everybody is involved in, in learning everything they can about that new curriculum, trying to stay on pace, learning the framework, and that includes our principals. So we have days at each of our middle schools where all the principals come together, and they receive training in exactly what they should be seeing in classrooms that are using that curriculum. And then they go around and actually observe teachers using that curriculum together, and then they come back and debrief with the trainer and with Ms. George, who's our middle school director. So it was an excellent day. I learned a lot, and I know our principals did, and so I'm just impressed with the work that they are doing at the middle schools. And then last night, I wanted to share that I did a presentation on our career and technical education plans and results, as well as our community outreach plans and results from last year, as well as what we're doing to expand in those areas this year for the St. James Foundation. And I mean, there were probably close to 50 people in there. The St. James Foundation was also presenting checks for grants that had been awarded through their foundation to the coast, for the Spark Labs, some materials that they were purchasing for them, for Union Elementary and for Jesse Mae Monroe Elementary. So I think those were two- or $3,000 checks that they got for some specific things. So it was a, it was a lot of fun, a lot of participation, and they promised to invite me back at the beginning of the year to talk about the bond, because there were, there were, there were some questions about that as well, but we just didn't have time last night. And then just last two things for, for you guys, just a reminder that tomorrow at, I believe it's 11 o'clock, is the EMC Bright Ideas Grant Award Luncheon for our schools in the Tri-County area that have been awarded Bright Ideas Grants, if you're interested in coming to that luncheon. And then also, on Saturday, South Brunswick High School is hosting the Southeast Health Occupations Student Association Conference. So I'm gonna be giving just a quick welcome address that morning, I believe at 8:30, and then they're gonna be hard at competing all day long. So if you wanted to check 'em out at South Brunswick High School on Saturday, they will be there. Thank you.
Mr. Pascal, how many playoff football games do we have this week?
We are three-for-three, pretty excited to say. So three, of our three teams are all playing in the playoffs, two home games even.
South and North?
South and West have home games, North's on the road.
And did I, I believe, I believe South won their conference?
Yeah, South Brunswick High School, conference champs this year, pretty big deal.
Yeah.
Good deal. All right, motion to go to close.
I move.
Motion by Ms. Cook?
Second.
Second by Ms. Smith. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye.[1167.46]
All this is written?
Motion.
Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Moffitt. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And then if I could have a motion to approve the closed session minutes from October 7th, and the regular meeting from October 21st for the committee meetings.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Cook, second by Ms. Smith, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
We don't need to take too long on that one. Motion by Ms. Moffitt, second by Ms. Cook, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay.